Good afternoon, welcome to the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission Meeting of September the 11th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. And our first item is to entertain a motion to approve the August 14th minutes. Is there such a motion?
So moved with a comment.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Scott. Mary, come in.
I passed on to Emily a few little, a dropped sentence and two other things, but they're not, I don't think of any consequence to change the decision.
And also, there's a last paragraph on page three is out of order.
Yes.
So that can be deleted. Other than that, is there anybody else that has any comment? Okay, hearing none with those minor changes, is there, are all in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wouldn't stand, Mr. Chair, because I wasn't here.
You weren't here, thank you.
Well, I just want to formally recognize Emily Huffer, who was recently promoted to our preservation planner position with the city. She served as the assistant preservation planner for about the last year, and we're really excited for her to step into this new role. So just want to give her congratulations, and we're very happy she's here.
Another round of congratulations for Emily.
Yes, thank you.
Good job. You certainly had some experience now.
Yes, just a little.
Okay, Emily then, other announcements on DRC?
So, next Monday, September 18th, at 3:00, we're having a special DRC meeting, and then we're having a regular called DRC meeting next Monday at 4:00.
Okay, and the other thing was that item, the item at 108 Bridge Street has been withdrawn by the applicant, in case there's somebody here that wanted to speak to that today. But I think everybody got that in their package, that information. Now we're ready for citizen comments. Open for citizens to be heard on any issue or concern. If you'd like to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please wait until the citizen comment period for that item. For all citizen comments, please fill out speaker hard card and hand it to staff. Come up to the microphone and state your name and address, and limit your comment to two minutes. Are there any citizens that would wish to comment to the commission at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. And our first item then, this afternoon, is consideration of alterations and additions principal at 1303 Adams Street.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application includes a proposal for a rear addition to the principal structure for the residents located at 1303 Adams Street. The addition includes a side-loaded garage that is located behind the historic home. The home is a gable and wing-framed house with a 2/3 porch and has older additions that are believed to be more than 50 years in age. Chapter 2 of the design guidelines provides recommendations for additions to historic residential buildings, which covers the design, placement materials, and finistration of the proposed addition. With this submittal, the applicant has provided alternate views, as suggested by the DRC, to show the proposed addition from the street. The guidelines recommend that the addition should be designed to be subordinate in appearance to the historic building. Considerations include the placement size, massing scale, height, setbacks, and materials. Scroll to a different photo for us to view. Okay, we can do, look at the side. The proposed design of the addition reads as a two-story scale and appears larger than the original 1-1/2 story building. During the August Design Review Committee meeting, DRC members were concerned that the addition would appear larger than the historic structure. Additionally, the guidelines recommend that in areas where historic garages are generally detached, new garages should appear to be detached. One should place garages in traditional locations behind the rear plane of the main form of the house, or as otherwise, not be visible from the street. As proposed, the garage will be seen from the street. In terms of the size of the addition, the applicant has indicated that the historic footprint measures 2,294 square feet. The proposed addition measuring 1,253 square feet would be 54.62% of the historic footprint. The applicant has reduced the proposed footprint by 25 square feet since the last Historic Zoning Commission meeting. The guidelines recommend that the building footprint of additions should not exceed 50% of the building footprint of the historic portions of the building, or the portions that remain that are at least 50 years of age. The proposed windows on the rear of the proposed addition, let me scroll to that so we can all look at it. There we go. They should align with the window pattern that is seen on the original house and utilize a three-window light pattern on the upper floor. Additionally, the new windows on the right side of the building should utilize siding underneath so that the foundation does not meet the bottom of the window, as the guidance was previously discussed at a previous Historic Zoning Commission meeting. The guidelines recommend that the following for windows on additions to historic residential buildings. One should design new windows to be compatible with the size detailing, placement rhythm, and relationship to solids to voids of those in the historic building. They should use historic profiles and use true divided light or simulated divided light windows. One should design windows to match the historic materials found on the building, but composite materials that have the appearance of wood are appropriate for windows stops, jams, and trim. Staff recommends denial of the proposal, on the proposed rear addition based on the following grounds. The building footprint of the addition should not exceed 50% of the building footprint of the historic portions of the building, and the proposed addition is 54.62% of the historic footprint. The guidelines recommend that the addition should be designed to be subordinate in appearance of the historic building. Considerations include placement size, massing scale, height, and setbacks, and the materials. If the Historic Zoning Commission decides to approve the certificate of appropriateness, the following conditions are recommended. The window specification shall return to the preservation planning staff for approval. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to approved plans must be returned to the preservation planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Okay, y'all introduce yourself and make any comments.
Great, thanks, y'all. David Swift, owner of 1303. This is our architect, Hannah Terry. Good to see you all tonight. Emily, thank you for the rundown on everything. You covered pretty much everything. One thing I did want to point out that was asked last time, if you'll scroll to the very top image, was the majority of kind of what we're seeing tonight are, hey, you know, desire to see some different photos, what it looks like from the street, obviously with considerations around the massing. Just wanted to kind of point out, top right is kind of the area that we're discussing currently. It was on here before, which is never really highlighted that well, so just kind of wanted to point that out to y'all. And then really, just kind of some points that we, you know, changes that we made from the last zoning meeting. The siding piece under the back window was adjusted. We went with siding on that piece there, reduced the height down two feet, back to, it's a little bit higher than what it was prior in other former additions, but at that number. And then the kind of general, you know, concern, I think, was the massing on that side. I think, I'm actually, we're really excited to show you guys this tonight, because it kind of does look alike a lot from here, but we're kind of excited for you to see a different image. You'll see kind of the bottom left right here, we've stepped that piece back since the last time, and that's kind of, kind of, from that front view, we're hoping is reducing that massing some there. And then in doing that, we've also dropped the previous proposed footprint by a percent as well, from the last time that we took a look at this. And then really, that's kind of the main piece of what we've got here. If we'll scroll down, you can kind of see some of the main thing that we're kind of proposing here. We've got an image of sort of there, what it'll look like, and if we could kind of take a look at a couple of these as we go down here. We've kind of mentioned there's a tree line just down the road. This is the tree line that runs the length of the property, and kind of what that looks like from the street. And then you can see the little, there's another image that looks just like this, but points it out, although you can see it here, that little white square, taken at, you know, front of the house, from street level, that's what you see. So, we just kind of wanted to point those pieces out. I think that's kind of the main pieces we're hoping for tonight, so we would appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Are there any citizens which comment on this application? Hearing none, then we need a motion from the commission.
To get the conversation going on, make a motion for approval. I know the staff has tonight recommended denial, and just looking at the pictures right now, I don't see where that roof addition is really going to be all that visible from the street front, and is obviously covered by the tree line down the side.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, discussion.
I'll comment, Mr. Chair.
Susan?
My feeling is it's still not subordinate to the original house. And I, you know, I know you've worked hard and you tweaked it here and there, but I just feel like that it's not really, you know, being, you know, it's not the best for the house, and I feel like it could be reduced some. So I will not be able to support this motion.
All right, other comments?
I, the reason that I can't support it as it's drawn is the garage knitted into the house. In most cases, the garages are detached or have the notion of being detached. I would have some grace because of the size of the lot on the coverage. So my issue is the way the garage is knitted into the side of the house, which is more of a modern suburban form, and that kind of then dictates some of the other challenges of making it look like change over time. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll weigh in. I was really hopeful the rendition, like showing the 3D image would help. And I think in part, for me, it did, but the one that really just got me was this image that's on the screen right now. And I actually went by since the last DRC meeting, and I, because when you look at it front on, I think that's not going to be that visible. But as you're driving down that angle, and you get past that tree line, and we're not supposed to consider landscaping, I know, I mean, I know it's hard, but even with the landscaping, that tree line that's there, when you hit that part, I thought, oh my gosh, that is going to be really big. And then when I saw the 3D image, it just kind of confirmed that for me. And one of the things that was even more challenging is when you look at the mass with those two garage doors and the two windows and the vent and that peaked roof, and I kind of compare it to the front, it looks a lot bigger from that angle even to that front piece that comes out. So I just think, I'm with Commissioner Pierce, I, lots of grace from my mind, given how big this lot is on the coverage piece. We've made adjustments on that before for other properties, given the size. But what really, I think, has given me trouble is how big, especially from that vantage point, which is when you drive down the street, you see it, because I did it, and I looked. It just looks so big, I think, compared to the rest of the house. The rest of the stuff on the back doesn't bother me. So, yeah, of course.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair, my only comment would be, when I look at your conceptual imagery, you know, it's all 1-1/2 story form, and we're kind of still seeing a two-story form in what we're seeing proposed. And I would just suggest going back and looking at your conceptual imagery again, and reimagining what you're going to do.
Go.
Yeah, I think I feel, I still feel kind of similar to what I had said before. And it's a combination of things, just that garage and then this kind of shed piece that's two stories. I think you've done some good things with stepping it back so that view planes not necessarily as harsh, but it's still very big. And, you know, the guidelines are really set up so that, you know, that 50% rule keeps things from just getting too big volumetrically. And I know that was a challenge to you all push some volume up, but, you know, if we were going to allow this much mass, I would have rather just given you 70%. But that's against the rules too, because I think it would have been better for the house scale-wise. So I'm struggling with this. Well, it's really tall and massive in this section, and it's a little over square footage. If there was, you know, you were under the 50%, and there was one piece of roof that was a little taller, might entertain that, but there's a lot of ask here. And I know you've come from over there, and we're closing the gap, I think. But that particular piece is just still too massive for me. So in my eyes, that eve line of the garage that's on the street side, if that came down to something that was, I know it's a tall story and a half, it's not quite two, but it's definitely not one. If it were one and some change, instead of, you know, two, short some change, I think that could help. And then if there's a way to shape this roof differently, so that the massing seems a little different, I had even thought if that shed piece was another gable with a bridge connecting, it could look like your big gable of the kitchen, another smaller one, and it would really mask that and break it down into smaller pieces, could get you where you need to go roofline-wise, and cut some of that space down a little shorter and smaller knee walls. So that's, right now, I still can't, I don't feel good supporting it in its current wider, taller, bigger, better version. I think, I think it's just too much right now.
And you're saying, is this right, it's about 55%, you're saying?
It's 54 and some change, yes, ma'am. I'm not sure the exact number.
And why does it look like it's so much bigger? Is, if you count the second, are you just counting the footprint?
It's footprint, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so it actually is 100% or 100 and, a little over 100% bigger square footage-wise. Is that correct?
I don't, I'm not sure on how much the actual square footage, because it's garage, so it's not, that doesn't count as actual square footage.
Well, you count garage as square footage.
For footprint.
The footprint.
You're just counting the footprint.
Yes, that's what we deal with, footprint.
I think that's what I was alluding to.
Well, yeah, but when it all gets up two stories, two minutes, a story and a half house, and a one-story house, then that starts reading.
Reading or not, we count footprint. That's what, that's our main thing, is footprint. So, all right, well, of course, I'm going to disagree with what I've just heard, because I think this fits nicely. And the view that you got, that I'm looking at right here, is a split-second view if you were driving by. It's headed south, split-second, because I've been there hundreds of times, thousands of times, probably in 45 years. So it's a split-second view. They've come down in this from 61% to 54% in footprint. And I think the view that I'm impressed with is the one from the front, head-on, which you see very little, not, yeah, one more, right there, you see very little of this in the back. I simply maintain this house, these folks bought this house, and it has not been touched, really, renovation-wise, in 20-plus years. And it needs some attention, which they're trying to do. So I'm gonna, I am for what you've gotten before you tonight. Maybe Scott and I are the lone wolves on this, but I just think we've, we need to get on with this, and I think y'all have been before us about five times, and we may have a, we may have a slight difference in this, this particular view headed south, but I think it's, I don't think it's detrimental to that project. So, and I think you've tried to work and do everything that's been asked.
I will say too, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead and get up to the mic if you would.
Hi. So the image that we keep referring to is my haphazard way of trying to Photoshop the model with an image that we took. So if you keep on going to the, we've included some renderings here. This is more in scale with one another, where you have your, the existing house and the addition, all from the same vantage point, as well as the next view, or keep going, sorry, the third one, yeah. So this, I feel like helps a little bit more, because everything's within the same viewpoint, rather than the image of the house and me trying to like collage it together. So I just wanted to point that out.
And I will say this, on the south side of the property is another property that we've gone through a few times regarding demolition. Immediate south, next door on the right side, as you're looking at this house. On the left side of that property are three houses that are not in the historic district, on the other side of that drainage ditch, and it's, so I think this is, if this is completed as shown, I think this is really going to help that portion of Adams Street. So be that neither here nor there, I guess. So any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. So, all right, we're back to five to three, four, five against, so.
Mr. Chair, we need an affirmative.
Yeah, we'll need an affirmative vote on something then, so does.
I would vote to defer to the next Historic Zoning meeting. I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
To October voting meeting. All right, all in favor of that?
If I could, just for point of clarification, we don't have a clock on this one. We're allowed to defer it again.
Yeah, yeah, and we can defer ad infinitum if we want to. That's not helping them, but we can.
I understand, yeah.
All right, we got a motion then to defer to the October meeting. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Still keep working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I think the presentation was very.
Very helpful.
Helpful.
Thank you.
Very clear.
Yes.
And I appreciate it.
Very well done.
Okay, our next item then is consideration of operations front door at 302 Public Square. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application came before the Design Review Committee during its August 2023 meeting to seek feedback on the proposal to replace the existing non-historic door. Based on the photos provided in the application showing the building in 1904 and 1971, it is believed that the current doors on the building are not original. The guidelines recommend restoring an altered storefront to its original design and using historic photographs when possible. Where evidence does not exist, use traditional designs and arrangements. The proposed mahogany doors with glass appear to match the doors that are seen in the 1904 photograph and are appropriate. Staff recommends the approval of this application with the following conditions. The proposed logo that is seen on the windows must apply for a separate administrative certificate of appropriateness for the signage. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the preservation planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Please introduce yourself and make any comments.
Andrew Polium, Polium Design Studios. We would like to get a certificate of appropriateness to replace these doors that we feel are not historic and were damaged severely over the past 25 or 30 years of lack of maintenance. And, yeah, we'd just like to see if we can get that taken care of.
All right, any citizens which comment on this application? Hearing none, then we need a motion, commission.
Mr. Chair. No, I'll move to approve the application with staff conditions.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Comments? Please vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all. Good job.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of front yard fencing at 301 Franklin Road. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting to install new front yard fencing for the residents located at 301 Franklin Road. The proposed front yard fencing is wood picket style fencing with a swag design that goes from a high point of 46 inches to a low point of 39 inches, and will span 43 feet in length. Chapter 7 of the Historic District Design Guidelines discusses the recommendations of new front yard fencing within the local historic districts. The style, material, and layout of the proposed fencing are consistent with the guidelines. The guidelines and zoning ordinance do state that front yard fencing cannot exceed three feet or 36 inches in height. The proposed fencing must be lower to adhere to the guidelines and the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. The fence height must not exceed three feet in height in accordance with the zoning ordinance and design guidelines. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the preservation planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Applicant, please introduce yourself and make any comments.
Yes, my name is Douglas Durr. I own the property at 301 Franklin Road. I have no problem with the staff recommendations, other than I would like you to consider maybe a little height difference in my driving around the area, even in the broader downtown Franklin area. I only found one fence that was 36 inches at the highest point, which the, I believe the ordinance says. So most fences were taller, all fences were taller, especially the corner posed, gate posed, other portions of the fencing. My intention would be to do a swag fence. I would like to start at 39, no, 46 inches going down to 39 inches. But if it has to be 36, I will obviously follow the 36-inch guideline. But I think it's worth considering, because not having any other fences in Franklin, I think you're setting, you may need to reconsider that height.
Thank you. I need citizens which comment on this application. Hearing none, then we need a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve COA for 301 Franklin Road with all staff conditions as presented by staff.
I'll second.
And I can talk too.
Yeah, talk.
I am not sure why the rule's 36, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but it is. And I'm not sure we have, we definitely have the authority to tell you, we could, yes, we don't have a problem with the taller fence, but I think you'd still have to go to the BZA, which is a whole other thing. Am I correct about that?
No, I don't, I think we can, I think we can change it on this if we want so to choose.
The zoning ordinance doesn't allow front yard fences to be taller than three feet tall.
Right.
And that is the limit.
So they'd have to go to BZA as well.
They would, but there would need to be some sort of undue hardship, some sort of unique circumstance related to this site, this lot.
How about context?
Up the road of the neighborhood. In terms of a BZA application, no, it is, it's specific to the lot itself. So the zoning ordinance maximum is three feet tall.
Yeah. So while I don't necessarily agree with the rule, that is it, and, you know, even if we told you you could do it, doesn't mean you could do it. So I think your best bet is to build a nice fence at the three feet.
Right. It's just tied, it's, sorry, it's just tied into a four-foot fence.
Yeah.
That's a picket fence. So it just seemed like, and when Emily and I spoke about it, it was like, bring it up, you know, it's worth. it up, you know, it's worth.
And I'm assuming that, I see the example photographs are like Miles Manor and some of those places, and those may just predate the three foot requirement. So therefore, yeah.
Yeah. So let's address posts, because that was brought up. So a post can actually be a little taller than the 36. Is that, is that allowed in the, in our ordinance?
I'm not a hundred percent certain, um, on that answer, but I can look into that. Chair would also have to verify that height.
It, it is strange to me that we've got, Harland Dale's got a 48 foot fence, or 48 foot high fence, and the other documentation that we see, regardless of whether they were, Miles Manor was before historic zoning, well, some of the other ones, um, all up and down there. I'm thinking, again, with the context along that road, what they've asked for is not outside the realm of.
But it may take forever if they have to go to the Georgia Zoning Appeals. But if the post is allowed to be taller, that a post there could negotiate the height difference is, is where I think you were going, Brian.
Yeah.
So I think it's worth saying that, um, that you were asking for how tall?
Forty-six to 39 in the swag.
Yeah. I would say if, if the post could be with a 36 foot fence, if it could be 45, 46 inches, if that's allowed by the city, I, I would make an amendment that we would support that.
Well, we don't know if this.
We don't know.
We, we don't know, right?
I think the way the motion is, is, is put, it goes back to staff.
Staff, so it, that'll take care of it.
Staff will take care of that.
But we do know zoning ordinance requires fences in the front yard to be no more than three feet tall.
Is what?
The zoning ordinance requires that front yard fences be no more than three feet tall.
Right.
Yes.
That is the ordinance.
Yes, except for horse fencing, which is allowed a taller height because it is a height, it is a taller height.
There you go.
Get yourself a horse.
Get a horse.
I knew there was a way.
All right, so do you want to make an amendment then, Mary, to?
I don't think I need to. If it goes back to staff and we're good with staff comments, then it can be handled.
All right.
So let me understand, you'll give, get back with me on the height of the post, and the other will be at three, at three feet.
Yes, sir.
That's perfect.
All right.
And I guess if he, if he chose not to do the swag because it's a lower level, we don't have any.
Go straight across Jackson.
Right.
All right, we need to vote then. Then all in favor of the motion to approve with staff comments, please say aye. Any opposed? Then we're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, consideration of alterations garage at 10002 Fair Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application includes the proposal to replace the existing windows and construct a covered porch addition to the existing historic garage. The application appeared before the Design Review Committee during its June 2023 meeting. The circa 1950s two car concrete block garage is considered a contributing structure within the Henshawville Historic District. The proposed addition was modified based on feedback from the DRC meeting to utilize a lower roof ridge line on the addition. The 200 square foot addition will be situated so that it will be located behind the principal building with minimal visibility from the street. The windows on the accessory structure appear to be a mix of aluminum windows, aluminum window frames without glass, and a wood window. Staff is unclear on what the proposed window material and pattern is proposed, but the guidelines recommend the following for windows. To preserve and maintain historic windows and historic window openings. Avoid adding new windows to the front facade or readily visible facades. Design new or replacement windows to have historic profiles and dimensions and a double hung appearance. Design newer replacement windows to match the historic materials found on the building. The application also includes the replacement of doors on the building. Specifications on the doors, so the man doors and the garage doors weren't provided within the application, and staff is unclear what the replacement doors will consist of and how they will look. The additional patio space with a concrete base is proposed, along with a bench wall around a fire pit and a pool. The guidelines recommend that there may be other site and setting alterations that be proposed within the historic districts. Generally, site and setting alterations should be considered as appropriate when they are undertaken in locations that are not visible from public view, do not involve the removal of historic features, and do not detract from or overwhelm the context of the historic districts. As proposed, alterations are located behind the main form of the principal building and will have minimal visibility from the street. These alterations are deemed appropriate. Staff recommends approval of the covered patio portion of this application with the following conditions. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to their approved plans must be returned to the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Staff then recommends deferral of the replacement of the windows and doors until more information has been provided. It is recommended that the applicant shows photos of the existing windows and doors, the specs of the new windows and doors, and if the garage doors are to be replaced, the proposed specs of the new garage doors. There are three project considerations, um, that the proposed pool will require a fence that will meet all the applicable code requirements, and it will also need, uh, to be applied for an administrative COA prior to construction. The swimming pool will have to be a separate building permit submittal, and the HVAC equipment, uh, should be shown and labeled on the plot plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant please introduce yourself and comment on it?
Yes, sir. My name is Jeff Fleshhour. I am, uh, representing the owner, uh, Amanda Chaconi and Randy Thompson. We, uh, have some ideas on the doors, uh, and the garage doors. We didn't know where to stay in the 50s theme, or we wanted to, uh, wasn't sure if y'all wanted me to do the 1885, um, doors associated with, obviously, horse and buggy. So, uh, I would assume if you wanted me to stay within the 50s theme, that this garage was built under, um, then I would have those drawn and submitted for your approval. I'd be happy to come to the next design meeting with that, that, uh, information. On the drawings, I have a structural engineer that's gonna go through the garage and make sure that the, uh, the structure is sound, or any modifications that need to be made will be included in the architectural drawings. Uh, as far as the doors are concerned, I have one man door that, uh, one pedestrian door to the alley that we were gonna leave as is. Uh, we were told in previous meetings in the design meeting that, uh, they didn't want me to touch anything on the alley side, so we didn't make those modifications in the preliminary drawings. But I can certainly do that. Uh, the windows are quite ugly. They are, uh, single horizontal steel bars. There's no glass left in them. The garage itself is, is somewhat deteriorated to a point where, uh, it definitely needs some work, so that's why we're here. I will do the research and try to get some window, uh, designs for the design meeting and, uh, review as well, uh, in October.
Okay, are there any citizens who wish to comment on this application? Hearing none, let's take this in two pieces. One, the covered patio portion, uh, and then we can talk about the windows and doors. Is there a motion then from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the certificate appropriateness for this, uh, property at 1002 Fair Street, uh, specific to the design of the new porch canopy.
Patio portion.
Patio portion.
Covered patio portion. How about that? Okay, is there a second? Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye. All right, that's unanimous. All right, what about the, uh, windows and doors?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to defer that, uh, window and door topic to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, um, and that would be to the October voting meeting, and could come to the design review with whatever recommendations you want to make for windows and doors.
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is the, uh, addition, rear addition at 236 Public Square.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application previously appeared at the August Design Review Committee meeting to receive feedback. The series of work proposed for the property is as follows. Bear with me, I didn't print it, so I'll have to read the staff report online. So the proposal is a rear addition to the second story of the 236 Public Square Building. The proposal has come before the Design Review Committee during its June and July meetings to receive feedback. The design is unique in the fact that it is, it is a 600, 605 square foot addition for the second story that will allow for two parking spaces beneath the addition. The design will utilize an arch that will face Third Avenue North that will allow for car doors to open. The applicant has provided views from different vantage points as requested during the last Design Review Committee meeting. The proposed addition will utilize bricks that appear to match the historic building. The guidelines recommend the following for additions on historic commercial buildings. Design additions to be subordinate in appearance to the historic building. Considerations include placement size, massing scale, height, setbacks, and materials. One should avoid the removal of sections of historic walls to accommodate additions unless significant structural deficiencies can be demonstrated. Design additions to be complementary and compatible in design and detailing of the historic building, but yet clearly identifiable using methods such as roof breaks, wall insetts, or wall offsets. The proposed addition does not utilize an inset or an offset and appears to be the same height, 30 feet 5 inches, as the front facade. This addition is not subordinate to the historic building, thus it does not meet the intent of the guidelines. Additionally, the proposed addition will cover the adjacent building's unique English brick bond pattern. Information on the replacement of the front doors of the building was not provided within the submittal, and further information is needed on the current doors, their history, and what the replacement would look like. Staff recommends denial of this application based on the following grounds. One should design additions to be subordinate in appearance to the historic building, and one should avoid the removal of sections of historic walls to accommodate additions unless significant structural deficiencies can be demonstrated. If the Historic Zoning Commission decides to approve the COA, the following conditions must, are recommended. The lots owned by the property owner must be consolidated prior to the construction to be in compliance with the rear yard, rear lot setback requirements. The proposed brick and mortar shall match a historic brick with a material sample of the brick and mortar subject to approval by the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission. The proposal for the front door replacement shall be submitted as a separate COA application. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Robin Hood with Crossroads Architecture. First of all, thank y'all for folks who I've met previously in the Design Review Committee. Um, we've tried to go and, uh, make whatever adjustments we needed to make based on y'all's recommendations. A couple of items that I just wanted to point out, um, since, since we met last at the DRC, on the, on the exterior elevations, um, specifically it's sheet A 2.0, and it's the elevation D, as in David. So I, we had a third window up there, um, that's in kind of the inset, and it's, when we had to do the five foot, uh, rear yard setback, it really kind of pushed that, and after thinking through that a little bit more, it really doesn't make sense to put that window there. So the renderings do show that, um, but I would rather not put a window there. Um, and if, if we did do anything, we could just do like a, 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 where it looked like it was an infill, maybe, um, potential infill with brick and, and keeping with the same arch pattern above that. So that's one item that we did change a little bit. Regarding a couple of the comments, um, a couple of the staff comments, the, um, talked about we were blocking the, the gray building adjacent to us. We were covering their, their, their brick. Technically, we do have an offset there, so we're really, we're not touching their building. We've got about a two foot, uh, inset, and then about a six foot, six foot four inch, as it moves out away from the building, so we're technically not covering that. So that was one item. The other item where they talked about the, the height of the building matches the front, plus or minus a few inches, um, but you're not gonna see it from the front. So the only, only, only time you would see that would be at the actual alley entrance from Third Avenue. I guess the other item talked about removing of, of walls, so there is a portion of an existing wall on the second floor, um, that we would, we would be removing, about seven feet high and about 10 feet wide. That's one area just for flow from, from the existing structure going into the addition. And then there's another, uh, area that'll be about six foot wide, seven foot tall, that would lead to the elevator area as well. And, uh, again, if, you know, if, if the owner ever decided to take the addition down, it would be, to me, fairly easy to replicate that, that small area of brick to be restored if we needed to. That's.
Okay, any citizens which comment on this application? Okay, commissioners, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. Um, staff is recommending denial of this application, and I move to, uh, recommend denial as well. I feel like it is not subordinate to the original building, and when we start doing, making approvals of this type, we're setting ourselves up for other people wanting to do similar things, and I feel like it can be tweaked and brought down some and, you know, make it where it's not quite so massive, because it is a big mass in the back. That's my, that's probably a long motion, but I move to deny.
Okay, is there a second?
Second that.
Kathy, thank you. All right, discussion?
Mr. Chair, what I, what is the most troublesome to me is what Ms. Besser touched on. The height of this looks, if the draw, if it's right, and you've got a great presentation, that it's taller than the historic buildings.
It's taller than, than the front, front facade of the existing building? It's not taller, we're, it's approximately the same height as the front elevation.
When I'm looking at it, it looks.
Oh, from the rear?
Yes, the north elevation.
I'm sorry.
The rear elevation. That is the, the thing that I would want to see brought down.
Yes, ma'am.
I think if you, I'm looking at the, the renderings and, and the elevations, and it looks like you've got four or five feet of parapet, and I don't think you need it.
Well.
Are you screening air conditioning and something up there?
That's what, when we first talked about this, that was our motivation behind that, but after look delving a little bit deeper, and since we met last, um, we actually got up on the roofs, and there's actually, so the existing footprint of the building is divi, there's like. there's like two, there's a high roof and a low roof. So, we're attaching to the low roof, the roof next door, which goes to, it goes to the existing bump out, the bump out that goes all the way back to the alley, that roof is three feet higher than the roof we're attaching to. And so, if we were to continue, where we're adding, actually doing the addition, if we were to continue that down, our ceiling height inside our new structure would be about eight or nine feet, which isn't going to work, that's not going to work for us. So, in all actuality, we could probably drop the parapet maybe two feet, maybe.
I mean, I'm looking at your elevations, and I see where your ceiling line is, you're going to have some structure, and if you still had 18 inches of parapet, you'd still be lower than the two buildings next to you. And I know you've got...
Based on my...
Neighbor roofs, but...
Right.
They shouldn't be attached and draining water on you or you on them, so I don't see what difference it should make, but...
Well, I mean, I could look at it a little bit tighter, a little bit closer. This afternoon, I was relooking at that, and the way that the existing bump out is right now, it's a step parapet. The second step, I could technically probably get just at that second step parapet. If you look at, if you look at A 2.0, and if you will look at the actual photograph, it'd be the second one from the far left. I don't know if you could zoom into that? That's possible. So, yeah, just, so on that second, yeah, the second elevation that are photographed there, that parapet is stepped, and so the tree foliage is kind of hiding part of that. But I could get to that point and still keep our roof height or our ceiling height inside the building pretty close to what the rest of the structure would be, so I could conceivably drop it down, as you were stating.
I think that's what's creating a lot of the mass, is you got...
I agree.
You know, six feet of brick on top of the windows, and it's more than all the rest of the buildings back there. I, I mean, I want to say, though, that downtown, the whole downtown corridor, these alleys is kind of the last untapped potential, and I think this is a creative, good solution that could be potential for people, but that particular part is just like, man, you really came up with a great solution with all the parking and all that, I think it's really good, but it's just, it got too fat on top. And I think if you can address that, I feel way more comfortable about it. I think more people can do things like this, get more space on the square downtown corridor, but not eat up parking and make things harder on the patrons and the city and everybody else. I think it's a, it's a good thing, I wanted to say that. But if that can be slimmed up, I think you're heading in the right direction.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask, you mentioned that you couldn't do eight or nine feet. Is there a codes issue with that, or what's the ceiling height issue? If you need to bring it down, going to eight or nine feet internally?
Well, so, they're looking at the high-end mercantile occupant, hopefully to take over the space, and we feel that from aesthetics inside the building, because it'll be exposed structure with exposed ductwork and kind of an industrial look about it, if the ceiling is so low, it's just, you just lose that aesthetic inside the structure.
So, there's not a code issue?
It's not a code issue, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, it's not.
Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question regarding the removing of the historic brick material that you mentioned, one was seven feet by 10 feet, and the other six by seven.
Yes.
What's the reason for that?
It's just to create a wider opening going from the existing space into the addition. In other words, we didn't want it to close off as like an office or something like that. We just wanted it, if whoever decides to take the space needed their showroom or their show space, or just really for flow mainly. That was our main reason for doing that, is for flow.
So, what would you replace that with?
It's just going to be an opening. It would just be an opening.
Inside.
Yeah, inside, correct. Yeah, this is all interior. It would be too interior.
And then it would go to doors, windows?
It would just be like a cased opening, a large cased opening within the plan. So, the brick would be removed, and part of the structure of the wall would be removed just to create flow between the addition and the existing space.
And then you'd have to rebuild, you'd have to build a wall behind that?
Cool.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, you've got to have something.
Yeah, if you were to tear the addition down and put it back, yes, you would need to infill that, those two areas.
And if you didn't do that, I mean, what would be the negative if you did not do it? I mean, you could not do that, right?
If a potential tenant moves in there and they want to use that space for an office, then we wouldn't have to do that. We wouldn't have to take out as much wall. It just depends on, we were just trying to give the, a future tenant more flexibility. That was the point of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
My only problem is the mass of this thing, especially as you stand in Third Avenue and look up that alley. It's, it's pretty massive.
Yes, sir.
And I guess also, I don't know how to, where you're going to match that brick from the other building, but that's neither here nor there, I guess, right now. But the mass is my biggest problem with it, although your representations are great, but I just, I have a real hesitation on this, and I think Ms. Besser, Ms. Besser alluded to this, there are going to be some other places that'll want to do something like this, too, up and down the downtown corridor.
Would it be possible, depending on the outcome here, to, for us to work this out with planning staff, to drop that down, or would you all need us to come back?
We'd have to come, you'd have to come back.
We will, okay.
I mean, if we denial on this, you'll still, yes, you'd work through it with them, but you're still going to have to come back.
Gotcha. Okay.
Same question.
Kathy?
Do you have any plans to do any type of brick finestration on the new construction part?
Could you define what you mean by finestration?
Like detailing on the brick?
The...
Like soldiers?
We're going to match the existing, I think, I forget what, I think it's an English bond where we got running, and then we've got header, header course. So, we'll match that, we'll match that coursing.
Maybe you can show that on your drawings next time.
Sure.
It'll lighten up the scale of the build, the volume of the building, too, if you give it a little more detail, if you're going to be bringing the parapet down.
Yes, correct.
It's just another layer.
Yes.
Putting a little jewelry on her.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other comments? Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion then to deny, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. I'd like to square one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, a loving, great denial.
All right, we're ready for the next item, which is consideration of alterations, roof replacement, chimney repointing, front door restoration, side door replacement, rear fencing, new driveway and signage at 245 Third Avenue North. Emily Huffer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application previously appeared at the August Design Review Committee to receive feedback. The series of work proposed for the property is as follows: Roof replacement, chimney repointing, not repainting, sorry, front door restoration, side door replacement, rear fencing, rear, new rear driveway and signage. For the roof replacement, the application includes a proposal to replace the existing asphalt shingle roof with an architectural asphalt shingle roof. This roof material was suggested during the DRC meeting as an appropriate material. The guidelines recommend that if partial or wholesale replacement is needed, one should use materials whose composition and appearance match the historic materials. If there's evidence of previous roofing material in the building through the use of photos or physical evidence of the roofing material, then that could be supported. The proposed roof is an appropriate material to utilize. For the chimney repointing and reconstruction, the application includes repointing the existing chimneys and adding 10 to 12 inches, approximately four rows of bricks to each chimney to restore the chimneys to a more historic height. The addition and reconstruction of the chimneys was discussed during the August Design Review Committee meeting. The guidelines recommend that if chimneys are collapsed or unstable, reconstruct them to match their original appearances, if known. If not known, use designs and materials typical for the age and style of the building. The building is listed as being constructed circa 1890 and is listed as a contributing building in the downtown Franklin Historic District. While historic photos were not included within the submittal, a taller chimney for the time period to which this building was constructed is appropriate. For the front door restoration, the proposal includes the restoration of the existing wooden front door. The current door is painted white, and the application intends to remove the paint to reveal the natural wood finish. The guidelines state that one should preserve and maintain the original entrance locations and elements such as original doors, transoms, sidelines, and surrounds. Leave unpainted doors unpainted, so refinishing the door is supported by the guidelines. For the side door replacement, the application includes a proposal to replace the existing side door that is damaged with an identical solid wood door that was found on the property. The guidelines state that one should preserve and maintain the original entrance locations and elements such as the doors, transoms, sidelines, and surrounds. Since the door is in disrepair and the applicant has a door that was found on the property to replace the damaged door, this replacement is appropriate within the guidelines. For the proposed rear driveway, this driveway will be accessible from North Margin Street. The guidelines recommend minimizing the visual impact of parking by following historic patterns that locate parking and driveways along the rear or side of buildings. Parking for non-residential uses in residential buildings should be located behind the building and should be further screened from off-site. While the proposed driveway material was not included within the application, the guidelines recommend the use of durable materials that were historically typical for driveways such as concrete, bricks, and asphalt. Due to the property being used for non-residential use, the driveway shall utilize asphalt, concrete, bricks, stone, pavers, or an equivalent material per the zoning ordinance. The proposed driveway location is appropriate within the guidelines as it is located behind the building. For the proposed rear fence, the application includes the proposal to install a four-foot wooden fence that will begin in the rear yard and will face North Margin Street. The zoning ordinance regulates that where a driveway access is located on the side street, the fence along the lot line shall not exceed a height of three feet to maintain driver visibility and safety. Additionally, since the property is located within the floodway fringe overlay, the fencing must be designed to allow for adequate drainage flow, including shadow boxes, flapped gates, aluminum fencing, or gaps at the bottom of the fencing. Materials can be any combination of treated wood, rot-resistant wood such as cypress or redwood, brick, natural stone, cultured stone, or other masonry materials or metal. While an example of the proposed picket fence has not been provided, a wooden, white picket fence with a height of three feet would be appropriate for this property. Then, the application includes the proposal for a post and arm post, but the sign itself was not submitted. A full sign package will need to be submitted for an administrative certificative appropriateness prior to the issuance of a sign permit. Staff recommends the approval of this application with the following conditions: The proposed fencing shall not exceed a height of three feet to be in accordance with the design guidelines and the zoning ordinance. The driveway shall utilize asphalt, concrete, brick, stone, pavers, or an equivalent material subject to the preservation planner approval. A wood picket fence is an appropriate style for the vernacular architecture of the house, and the design of the fence and type of wood shall return to the preservation planner for approval. The sign and signpost shall be submitted for an administrative certificative appropriateness. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the preservation planner or the historic zoning commission for review and approval. And there are three project considerations that staff has noted. A floodplain development permit is required for any work inside or outside the building. This includes any site work such as fences or grading. The next comment is, please provide calculations for pervious versus impervious area. This lot is required to maintain at least 40% landscape surface area. And then the last comment is, as long as the lot currently sits, a fence will have to meet corner lot standards for fencing, which state the front yard fence height standard of three foot maximum is applicable on a side street facing yard up to 20 feet behind the front facade of the home. 20 feet behind the front facade is where the rear yard standard begins, and a maximum seven-foot fence could be used. However, if you add the driveway, then a new standard is used. Where a driveway access is located on the side street, the fence or wall shall either be setback a minimum 15 feet from the side-street lot or not exceed a height of three feet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 申请 please introduce yourself and comment on the application.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Matt Bernad, I'm the property owner.
Any comments?
I think she did a great job. That covers, that covers all of it. I think after the meeting last month, I tried to incorporate some of the, a couple of the comments, dropping the standing seam metal roof on the porch portion of the roof and just going with an architectural slate-style asphalt tile. And then, you know, the plan with the chimney would be to go ahead and do the repointing now to get it short up and then come back, you know, in coming months, once we can source some brick that's closely matches, you know, we're trying to find some reclaimed brick that'll, we could allow to add that height back, which, following your comments from last month, like observing the chimneys around town, I think a little more height would probably be appropriate. So, we'd like to do that as long as we can find some brick that matches. But that's, that's it, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, any citizens wish to comment on the application? Hearing done, let's do this in three pieces. One, let's talk about, the first one would be the roof and the chimney. So, is there a motion to deal with that, the roof and the chimney?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application with staff comments.
Second. Roof and chimney. All right, discussion. Hearing done, ready to vote on the...
I think your roof selection is...
Yeah, I think the roof looks good.
One other comment would be, some of the local brick yards in Nashville sometimes have reclaimed brick. You could call and ask them and maybe take a sample and see if they could match it.
Yeah, the chimney guy that I'm going to be using, he mentioned a couple of those yards, and we're going to, I was going to go see those this time of time, yeah.
Good, good comment. Any other comments on the roof and the chimney? Then, all in favor of the motion to approve the recommendation with staff comments, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one would be the front door and the side door. Motion on that?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Second.
Thanks, Scott, thanks, Mary. Any comments on that? All right, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, front, front side door, all right. Then we'd left with the rear driveway and rear fencing.
Move for approval with staff comments.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Is the little rectangle drawn, is that all the paving that's going to be there?
There.
Or is the whole backyard going to be paved?
No, ma'am, it would just be, it would just be, just a driveway with dimensions that, I guess, whatever the zoning calls for, for just the minimum dimensions to allow for the car parking there, not the whole yard, just the driveway.
Single, single car?
That's a good question, actually, I haven't thought about it yet, so I guess, I don't know if that would go back to staff or planning, I don't know, whatever. If it was, if it was a single, it would probably be tandem, like similar to what's on the front now. If it was double, it would be one car depth, but side by side, and I don't know what zoning or...
I think they alluded to this 40% landscape thing, too. I think that'd probably play in pretty quickly on the size.
And whether or not it's pervious or impervious.
Sometimes, and I don't know if Building Neighborhood Services help you with... Sometimes, and I don't know if Building Neighborhood Services help you with what the allowable curb cut is, but they're not gonna give you a forty-foot wide curb cut.
The driveway one, I was getting, that was really thinking a little further ahead. It's more of something I'd like to do down, you know, the road within the next year or so, so it wasn't an immediate need, so I...
I would at least like to see what's actually gonna happen, come back to staff for approval. This is our one soft landing right now, pretty much, on that side of our historic cemetery. And I'm just envisioning, I'm trying to envision how all that's gonna look with the fence. You actually have the flexibility of doing a taller fence at the back. I just don't see a picture of what this is gonna look like. And it is corner, and corners matter in historic areas.
I think that's a good comment. I'm not, I still don't understand the fence layout, where that's, where you wanna run that fence.
Are the style...
Actually, I think we have, there's a...
I mean, I see, I see this red line on proposed fence line, but I'm not...
And it has to be three feet, though, right?
I got that, but I'm talking about the run.
And the style.
On the side, the side fence, is that where you're talking about?
That would be the run right there, which is, which is where the previous white...
So it'll stop at the driveway, right?
Correct. Yeah, this, this shows it with no driveway.
Right.
Which is what we're going now, we would just run the fence all the way to the rear property line until such time we did a driveway down the road, and then we'd have to back out the fence and reroute it per the, whatever the guidelines are with that new driveway once it goes in.
Okay, but you're gonna run something behind, you want a rear yard fence.
Yes, there is, there is a rear fence now that can't probably be seen behind this hedge, but there is an existing, probably seven-foot tall fence between me and the neighbor to the rear.
And is the...
Along margin. And so I would just tie into that.
Is it gonna go across the front yard too?
No, no ma'am, no, no, I would not put a, yeah, no fence in the front yard. It would just kinda dogleg out towards the rear of the house.
Gotcha, where that red line is.
Yes.
Gotcha. And do we know the style, what that's gonna look like?
A simple wood picket style fence, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know that unpainted picket fences are all, I don't know that I see those downtown a lot, but...
I think the comments that staff made about the driveway options is important to pick the right one that works with the fence with the house. So there's a lot of options between asphalt or pavers or stone, so you had a little bit of, do you have something in mind?
Yeah, it would have to be, I've been thinking about it, I mean, if, for the time being, we left that off and I came back, whenever I got closer to it with some renderings and some other stuff, it would probably be more appropriate, but it would have to probably, you know, we uncovered, when we took down this hedge, we actually uncovered the remnants of a small stacked stone wall at the corner.
Oh wow.
That we're waiting, we're gonna, I'm gonna explore with the floodplain zoning as far as what can be done to hopefully kind of restore that. And I think that just because of the rock wall across the street of the cemetery, once that driveway, if, if one of the driveways put in the rear, it'd probably have to have a similar stone element to it that kinda wraps into the driveway to kinda tie it all together, but again, probably...
Or maybe accent it, who knows?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we defer not, not what we voted on, not the roof, not the chimney, but this portion...
The rear drive and the rear fencing.
Yes, sir. To the next voting meeting.
I'll second that.
I think that...
For the purpose of detail.
Would it be, would it, so would it be possible to move forward, so is that finished for the driveway, you said, or the driveway and the fencing?
The fencing and the driveway.
And the driveway?
The material.
So for the sake of the applicant, what do we wanna see at the next voting meeting?
Is the material being used on the driveway, the style of the fencing, and the post, and just the general configuration detailed.
Yeah, driveway, it had, fits into the driveway.
Is there a way to just drop the driveway element for the time being and just deal with the fencing?
I don't...
It's up to you. I would do everything you wanna do before us. I think that would be your best move.
But he did show, I remember seeing in the materials previously the example of a wood picket fence.
You did see...
Not tonight, but previously, there was an existing wood picket fence.
There was a photo of the, of the old one.
And he indicated he was gonna match that, is what I remember.
But we don't have that in here, which is what we're asked to vote on tonight.
Yeah, but it was in the materials that we've seen and that have been submitted.
At Design Review.
And I would also recommend, for the sake of simplicity, that you contact the floodplain administrator to talk about the surface that's used in that driveway, because the floodplain administrator may have input too, is what's required.
So the purpose then would be to defer it for more specifics relative to the driveway and the fencing, period?
Yes, sir. That was what I was moving.
Okay.
You said it well.
And my only, my only concern on that is I can tell the applicant would like to move forward with the fencing, so if it's a standard picket fence that we've, that was my only question, is if we can get comfortable with that, if they wanted to alter it later, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we're going to pull the photo that was provided at the DRC meeting that shows the picket fence that is on the property today. There is a condition of approval that it return to the preservation planner for approval. If the fence that is on there today is appropriate to the style of the house, we could also approve that administratively when it returns to the preservation planner. So give us just a moment.
Yes.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got a motion to defer that's been seconded, so let's...
Well, I guess, I guess in my comment, I would not support deferral if we can see the fence picture.
I agree.
And be okay with that.
And my, my concern about that would be, the devil's in the details, what are the posts gonna look like? I mean, you're seeing a remnant of the fence.
Yes.
So I would like, I would totally approve that style picket, but I still don't know the whole, what it's gonna look like, and it's on a corner.
In the context of the lot.
Yes, sir.
Now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a little parliamentary inquiry, don't we have an active motion, not the deferral on the floor right now?
But the motion to defer trumps whatever motion's on there.
Not according to the rules of order, says it's not interruptible.
As of right now, we had a motion, there was a motion to approve with comments, and then Commissioner Pierce had a motion to defer.
And so the motion to defer needs to be resolved first.
Okay.
And then...
Trumps it, sorry.
Yeah, not according to the parliamentary procedures that they provided us, but it says, does this motion interrupt?
Well, we get another legal opinion here too.
Here we go.
This is different than Robert's Rules of Orders, by the way.
Okay.
It's a motion to defer, supposed to trump, but not according to our rules.
Well, I don't know about those particular ones. Go ahead, Mr. Squires.
Thanks. To the extent it helps, I agree, the deferral motion has to be done first. If you think in terms of a letter, you've gone up the letter to deferral, you have to resolve that before you can go back down the letter.
I think the motion to defer was seconded, I'm not...
Yes, it was, and I think, I didn't write that right.
It was, it was Ms. Besser.
Oh, Susan, all right, Mary motion, Susan, okay. All right, so let's deal with the motion to defer. All those in favor of the motion to defer, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Oh, great. Those in favor not to defer, raise your hand. All right, let's do something else then. I guess that...
That failed, right?
It failed.
It failed.
It failed. We're back to the, we're back to the original motion, which was to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the motion to approve by removing the driveway portion, period.
I'll second that.
Now, what does that mean?
Means we're just gonna vote on a fence, in that we like that fence, right there.
All right, is there, is there a second then to Tyler's motion?
Mr. Chair, I did.
Because I'm gonna see with the house.
Okay, so we're deleting the, removing the driveway, so we're just wrote, voting on the rear, we're talking about the rear fencing only.
Yeah, in the, in the fencing, they're proposing something similar to that with no, no driveway now, it's in the distant future.
Right.
And they have to come back to staff anyways, is that correct, for that fence?
Correct.
Yeah, so staff's gonna get to see.
A three-foot fence.
Right. Clear.
All right, comments then on the motion that's been by Tyler and Josh seconded on the fencing? I still have a problem with the fencing, the layout of the fencing.
Yeah, I just want a little more clarity, because we've always asked for more drawings, what does it look like in relationship to the house, it's a corner lot. That's a great little picture, and I'm glad it's a cute little relic, but I mean, it just doesn't really show much to it.
Well, we've seen other pictures in other situations tonight, so I don't know.
My, my, my deal is that it's on a corner. I literally helped build that rock wall across the street. I think this is an opportunity to get it right, and that would be mine.
If I can maybe add just a little bit of clarity to this, so this, this fence, if mirrors that kind of the red line that we had marked on an aerial, you can see where it kinda, it comes across the screen here, and then it runs down towards the back of the photo. You just couldn't see it because of the, there was that huge wall of weeds and trees and whatever else.
But you've taken all that down, right?
Yes, and this fence...
So that's, the picture we're seeing is not representative of what's there now.
Okay, I'm, so I'm, is what, so I guess I'm confused on, and if your concern is primarily with just the material and the style of the fence or the location of the fence?
Both.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
We just need clarity.
The location's gonna be unchanged from the, from the old one, or where I kinda drove through that red line, but...
We just need clarity, you know, like he did a nice drawing that showed it, other than a red line.
And you know, what we've seen from the applicant is, is taking suggestions from the DRC.
Yeah, that's true.
And I, I would recommend taking a look at a new picket fence that went up on Third Avenue South, near South Margin. It's just recently there, it's a little white picket fence, done very well, and approved by the commission within the last...
Couple of months ago.
Couple of months. And I would say, you know, copy that style.
The former Blue House.
And that should allay some of the concerns of the commission.
Does it match the architecture? And then where are the posts gonna, how's that gonna work?
It depends on what he wants to show.
I agree.
We don't know, or if there's a gate, or...
All right, so we've got a motion then to restate your motion.
So the motion is the original motion on the table to approve the drive and fencing, and then it was amended to remove the drive wholesale.
That's right, which is where you are right now.
So it's just to approve the fencing as proposed, which is just a red line in that picture.
But right now, we're just on the amendment to remove the driveway.
That's right.
Which has not been voted on, if I'm right, am I correct?
That's right.
From the original motion.
All right, so, all right, let's deal, just deal with that then. Motion to remove the driveway. And all of that, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Who made that motion? Was that Tyler?
That's Tyler and Josh.
And this is an amendment to the motion.
Yes.
So we're back to the main motion. Okay, all right.
As amended.
I don't think you asked who was opposed to it, and I think some people might be opposed to the motion.
I'm sorry, what?
You didn't ask who was opposed to the motion.
To remove the driveway. Are there any opposition?
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, but I think I'm looking at somebody that's opposing it.
It's a little confusing.
It's, well, it is a little confusing. All right, so right now, we need to just vote on remove...
No, I think you've asked all those in favor of the amendment, but you haven't asked if anybody was opposed to it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, removing the driveway, sorry. All right, all in favor, you've got that, all opposed to removing the driveway? Nobody?
I don't think that was what the motion was, anyway, I'm sorry, I thought...
I, I can be opposed to it, because I'd just like to see the whole plan.
I think the amendment is just removing it from the motion we're voting on. It's not saying we don't want them to have a driveway or we do. It's just, we're not voting on a driveway now, that's it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. I think I got that. All right, so Mary, are you still saying no?
Well...
On the amendment?
My, my, my wish would be it all came in comprehensively together, and you actually, and we actually knew what the whole project was, but I'm fine with removing the driveway if that's the choice.
Okay, that's the amendment. All right, now we're back then to the fence, the fence, so, and Tyler, Josh's motion then as amended. So all in favor of the motion to approve the fencing as amended, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. All right, we're approved then.
Yay.
Five to three. Sorry.
With, with the reminder... With the reminder that you do have to work with staff on the actual everything, the details, and I trust them to do that.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Signage, we still have a motion on signage.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, you took the driveway out, the driveway's still, isn't that on the application for the COA?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it still needs to be resolved.
From that motion, but we still have to vote on it.
Okay.
So it still needs to be resolved.
So I would move to defer the driveway request, pending further information from the applicant.
Second.
To the next voting meeting, which is in October.
I think we should get clarity from the applicant, whether he wants to...
He wants to do a drive or not.
Yeah.
I would, but we could, it would probably be best to drop it completely, because I'm feeling that that driveway is gonna be, maybe a more, gonna require some more in-depth studying in terms of, not only the design, but there's...
All right, then we need to vote to deny.
So Mr. Chair, I move to deny the drives.
Does it, does it just, a denial now doesn't preclude me from...
No, you come back later. Once you know what you wanna do.
Perfect.
It just gives closure for now.
That's perfect.
Taking enough care.
All right, is there a second to Brian's motion?
I second.
Kathy? Discussion, please note. All in favor of the motion to deny, then please, of the driveway, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we're done.
Signage.
Signage. Thank you.
The signage should be addressed by the condition of approval, that the sign and sign post shall be submitted on an administrative COA.
But that's, that can also be just a regular COA, right?
An administrative one.
Administrative, what?
An administrative COA.
Like you do with others. I don't know that we need to deal with that. You okay with that? That was part of that. The COA for a sign that we don't have the information for. They showed a post for it, they want a sign, but that's part of it, that can be an administrative approval anyway.
Right. I was just gonna clarify that, as long as there is an administrative approval, I don't even think you need to vote on it.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm, so tell, say that again.
As long as there exists a means for administrative approval, Kelly, Emily, tell me if that's not right, then you don't need to vote on it tonight.
Yeah, okay, well, it's, it's in...
It's in conditions of approval.
It was in the recommendation. I don't think to vote on it.
Nice job.
Please, just go on.
Thank you.
I think we're done.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, next one is consideration of alterations to the roof at 324 Third Avenue South.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject property at 324 Third Avenue South received a certificate of appropriateness in April 2022 for a series of alterations and demolition in regards to constructing a new rear addition to the historic house. No alterations to the historic roof line were approved under that COA. On June 1st, 2023, members of city staff were notified that the roof structure on the main form of the home had been completely removed without a permit. form of the home had been completely removed without a permit. The scope of this kind of work requires a building permit from Building and Neighborhood Services, and because it is in historic preservation overlay, a COA is required prior to the issuance of a building permit. A stop-work order was placed on the property immediately. For alteration to roofs on historic residential buildings, the City of Franklin Historic District Design Guidelines recommend to preserve historic roof forms and materials. Roofing sections on main and other visible façades should remain unaltered. In August 2023, a certificate of appropriateness was administered for the property with a condition of approval that the six-foot rear unapproved but recently constructed foundation for an addition on the rear of the historic addition on the right side facing the driveway be removed from the building. The current application is proposing to add an addition to the rear of the building that was voted to be removed in the most recent COA. The guidelines recommend the following for additions in building form. Design additions to be subordinate in appearance to the historic building. Considerations include placement, size, massing, scale, height, setbacks, and materials. Design additions so that there is the least possible loss of historic fabric, and so the character-defining features of the historic building are not removed, damaged, or obscured. Maintain the historic building shape, mass, scale, proportion, rhythm, and roof shapes. Preserve historic building elements that contribute to the building's style and historic character. By adding this addition, this would cause the historic roof form to be altered, and it would not follow the guidelines. Further, the proposal includes altering the rear roof form. The proposal to alter the roofline came before the Historic Zoning Commission during its April 2022 meeting. The previous application included the proposal to create a larger central roofline. DRC members recommended that the historic roofline should be respected and that the rear addition should softly tie into the existing historic roofline form. The approved rear of the building features two rear-facing gables with a flat roof porch in the middle that softly ties in the historic addition form. The proposed alteration would alter the unique addition roof form and gable shape, which is closest to the driveway, to remove the valley resulting in a different pitch and silhouette. The guidelines recommend the least possible loss of historic fabric in order to preserve the character-defining features, which would be lost if the historic form was further altered. The approved flat porch roof would become a rear-facing gable. The proposed design will then feature three rear-facing gables. The design guidelines state that additions are to be subordinate in the appearance of the historic building and to preserve the historic elements that contribute to the style and character. Considerations include placement, size, massing, scale, height, setbacks, and materials. This proposed addition does not meet the guidelines, as it will be altering the historic form of the building and will alter the historic mass, shape, and roofline of the building. Staff recommends denial of this application based on the following grounds. One should design additions to be subordinate in appearance to the historic building. Considerations include placement, size, massing, scale, height, setbacks, and materials. One should design additions so that there is the least possible loss of historic fabric, and so the character-defining features of the historic building are not removed, damaged, or obscured. One should maintain the historic building shape, mass, scale, proportion, rhythm, and roof shapes. And finally, one should preserve the historic building elements that contribute to the building's style and historic character. If the Historic Zoning Commission decides to approve the COA, the following conditions are recommended. The application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to the issuance of a building permit, and any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the Preservation Planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Just welcome back. Please reintroduce yourself and comment on the application, the changes that you want to make.
Okay, Scott Nicodemus with Southern Build. I'm gonna tell you what we are proposing to do, and then Mr. Hutchinson, the owner, is gonna tell you why. That's, he seems it to be necessary. So if you look at page A4, which I think we're looking at now, the approved rear addition, rear elevation is what was existing there. We were given approval to remove the attached little red shed or addition that was on there, so that was removed. We want to go ahead and build that back to allow, well, he'll tell you why. We want to build that back, and then we want to move over to the kitchen area where the flat roof is, and we're proposing a gable for that area, because currently, with the flat roof and the way the prior architect designed this structure, when you walk from the kitchen onto the back porch patio, the back porch patio will only be seven-foot ceilings, and the kitchen will be just about eight foot in the kitchen. So if we can put a gable that will match the existing gables on the back house, not be any larger, not be any smaller, then that will allow for the kitchen to have adequate ceiling height, which I think would raise to nine feet, I believe, in the kitchen. And then the outdoor patio would at least give it another foot to an eight-foot, to almost nine-foot ceiling in the back patio. Those are the two. So we're asking to put the bump-out back on that was removed, and then to gable the center. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello again. Nice to see everyone. Yeah, so obviously, many of you guys have ever been through a very long and drawn-out renovation or build process. You can feel my pain, so there's, obviously ebbs and flows, as we've been now over two years and four months of working with architects and engineers. Our initial architect had submitted the plans. She's no longer in the country, that's why we had to change architects, and there's some things like that have become clear. So like, starting with the parts of the gable, you know, we never submitted that for approval. I know that the, there was a back porch that we took off that had a flat roof part, and so we went back over that, was kind of our proposal, but we think she just miscalculated the ceiling heights, because we never would have been, you know, okay with those ceiling heights, obviously being like seven feet on the back porch. So the gable that we're asking for, basically, is just to help us with that. It's not gonna be visible from anywhere. It was not part of the historic structure. That was a flat porch on the back, there was a flat roof on the back porch that was deemed okay for removal, so it was not a historic roofline, anyway. I mean, we're gonna tie into, obviously, the one part in the L shape that goes down the driveway, but we just want to get, like I say, a gable there. And like I say, I feel like that was just an oversight. With the architect, and, you know, I've learned, obviously, a lot more than I ever anticipated going through this process, but now trying to figure out how to make the home livable, right, with that roof, like I say, we're just trying to figure out how we can fix that issue. And so that's why we're proposing the gable. It is subservient to the front ridge line, it's gonna be subservient to the historic gable that goes down the driveway. So that's, I guess, really the reason there, so we can get just the ceiling height inside that we need for the kitchen and for the back patio. As far as the second piece, is this, you know, roughly 130-foot addition there? So there was an error before. Now, it did come straight out from the corner of where the corner of the house is. Now, we are proposing to go back in like this, the addition that was on there before did. If you look on the plans, so we're not actually going off of the same roofline, it's actually a different roofline, so we're not gonna alter the historic roofline. We're just proposing to go, and we're not actually proposing to go back as far as the other one does, but the back patio, if you look over on the other, I don't know, this is Scott's computer here, but the back patio does have a support beam, and, you know, we're just proposing, basically, to take that addition over to where that support beam is. Again, we still want to maintain the historic corner of the house, which we, you know...
Page A1.
Page A1, okay. So if you look at the one on the right, you see back there, we're still maintaining the historic corner of the house, and we still want to maintain the historic roofline that goes on the L shape there. Yeah, we're bumping in two feet, which is where the old addition leaned to, whatever you want to call it, was there. We're not going back as far as it was. It doesn't protrude as far back into the backyard as the old one did. It just goes over a little bit further, about five feet further to the left on your drawing, so it ties into the support beam for the back patio, which was approved before, and obviously, we have the discussion of the roofline there. But that's the reason we're looking at it. We just, you know, we want to obviously maintain the historic roofline. If we've learned anything in this, we want to make sure, again, that we're, we want to do everything we can. We don't want to change anything from the, you know, appearance of any historic rooflines, the historic corner of the structure, anything like that. Again, it just, it made sense from a structural aspect, as far as tying in to the corner of the covered patio, and then, like I say, it's shorter, it doesn't protrude as far into the backyard as the old addition did that was taken off. And it just, like I say, both of these things just help with the livability of the house, which is really all I was looking at, is just trying to figure out how to, you know, fix the, make the livability as good as it can be, because it's where I want to live. And it's gonna, you know, it's no longer become a process, now it's a journey, and we're gonna do whatever we have to do to get there. So that's our reasoning. You know, I just, what, we want to come, obviously, we've worked with inspectors multiple times, we are, you know, been very diligent trying to get everything corrected. I know that they mentioned the first part she read was about the situation in June, and obviously, that's a deep regret, and we're trying to work, you know, through whatever we can to make sure nothing changes, because we don't want any changes from the historic, you know, outline of the building there.
Okay, any citizens wish to comment on the application? Hearing none, then we need a motion from the commission to get this started.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny per staff comments.
I'll second that.
And since I moved to deny, like I say, you know, why I agree with staff. Your previous proposed, which been approved, is a better design aesthetically for the house and how it actually ties in to the rest of the old house than what's being proposed. And when you say flat roof, it has some pitch.
Yeah, it has a little pitch, it does, yes, sir.
What is that pitch? Two and a half, 312?
It has to be three and a half.
So you have 312?
I think we're right at three, maybe.
But our architect told me we were below three when I was out there with him last, or a couple of weeks ago, when we were looking at the plans.
So when you're at seven, so you're at seven, you have a seven-foot ceiling on the inside for your kitchen, or wherever you're talking about, at the wall. If you vault your interior ceilings, can't you get more ceiling height?
No, because the slant runs from the back of the house back towards there, so we can't get more ceiling height. And like I say, that's the problem, that's what we're trying to do, is trying to figure out a way to get more ceiling height for both the back porch and for the kitchen area.
And then the other thing I would suggest is that old houses are old houses, and you work with the old house you have. And I, too, have done an extensive renovation like you're talking about, and I have worked with the slopes of the old house, and I think that's part of the charm. And the part that's approved for the rear elevation with that patio looking like a porch on the exterior of the rear is a better design than the proposed rear elevation.
The other part is, like I say, that was, that was not a historic part, and it's not visible from anyone else. It's only visible from my backyard. Like, no neighbors can see it, no, it's not visible from anywhere, that part there. Like, you have to be in my backyard, standing in the middle of it, to even have a line of sight to it. And again, that was the part over the portion that we took off from the patio that we deemed was not historic. Now, I understand, like, the historic part that ties in off of the L shape, but that initial sloping part, I didn't think was historic, or was not deemed historic.
Other comments? Okay, you ready to vote? We got a motion to deny with staff comments. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposed? Done.
So is that on both fronts? Okay, they didn't get separate. All right.
Yep, okay. Any other business for tonight? Susan.
Do we know the 3:00 meeting for next week? Do you know what that's, do we know what that's for?
So it is gonna be the second round for the middle eight, and so we plan to send that out to y'all, hopefully tomorrow, since it is a lengthy packet, just so everyone has plenty of time to review it and everything, and so, yes, that's what the 3:00 meeting is.
Thank you.
Are they limited to that hour, or are we just gonna roll right into the other?
Limited to the hour. It'll have to be.
Then we roll into our 4:00.
What time is it, 3:00?
3:00.
It was first item, and it's a two-hour meeting.
No, it's, no, it's 3 to 4, the regular's at 4.
They're not on the 4:00, right?
What?
They're not on the 4:00.
They're going to a special meeting.
Yeah.